Here, Mike.
President.
Rick here. John here.
Sarah.
Here.
motion to the leaders.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public opinion board, this is the time to place for discussion items.
We need to present it, please.
Motion to approve?
I'm motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public opinion board, this is the time to place for discussion items not already on the agenda with the timeline of three months each. Discussion possible action in reference to trees around edge of cemetery property.
All right, you see the picture that I took, and I'm not a photographer, so bear with me. So these would be directly behind the houses along South Jackson. This is the property that's the future growth, cemetery, future expansion, I guess. And as you see in picture two here, there's about twelve trees across, but then you'll see according to picture two, I don't know, there's probably, if I had to guess, forty or fifty going down the east-west row that borders the houses on Grand Circle. I would say five, about every six are the soft pine, and that's what the deer are eating. And you can see where they're, basically pine needles are gone up to where they can reach. The hard pine, or the, some people call them the prickly ones, they don't seem to bother those. And you'll see a couple in those pictures there where they're staked. Mark Smith is here, he's the one that asked us to be on the agenda. I know he's brought it up in years past. And I think the tree board's been out there, the trees are still alive. The problem is, is they just never can come back without the deer eating them. And it doesn't look the best, so, Mark, do you have anything to talk about?
I'm just, I've been dealing with it for four or five years now, and does that bother Nate?
Yeah, you invited me to your house, and we took a look behind, and that's why we...
It just, it's, looks pathetic. And one corner tree is so overgrown, it's probably two foot over into my property. The stakes right underneath it, and it goes to the east, and mine goes to the south. I mean, they're right there in plain view. I don't know why they would have planted them that close to the property line, knowing they're gonna get this big. They're just, I mean, I never noticed it. Mike Williams pointed out to me, there's probably a five... Oh, it's probably bigger than that, seven, eight inch volunteer tree between me and Morgan's house. And there's one over there on the south side of Morgan's, too, a volunteer tree.
On your property, or on cemetery property?
They're just growing it, and what's the other trees?
They're growing in with the evergreens, where the pine trees.
Seed went through over, and it's probably a tree.
Well, the ones the deer have been eating, I believe they're arborvitae, Technia aurora, arborvitae.
Yeah.
They were planted pretty close together to try to form a screen. They were, this project was done with memorial money, I think it was from Algers, and we used that money to get a big grant in order to do that project. So there's a lot of volunteer hours. I, well, I'll agree, they don't look good with just stubs sticking out there with no green on it. Those could be trimmed up. And some people like to see evergreens trimmed up, some people don't. If they're trimmed up, then you can mow underneath them easier. I'd be reluctant to agree to just cut them all down. Every sixth one has a spruce, I believe, and the deer have been leaving those alone.
And the deer, I mean, the deer left these alone for a long, long time until food got scarce, and then they, yeah, then they decimated it.
Yeah, some years have been worse than others.
No, I, don't get me wrong, I like them there, but it hides that back there, that Brandon goes to save field. It just, right now, it looks like crap, with those trees, every, what was it, Brandon? Two or three that's eaten, and there's one that's not eaten.
I think it's about five or six, and there's five here.
That was the pattern, those spruces, the spruces don't taste good, the arborvitae's do.
I'm gonna put my voice in. I don't, I don't see any problem of us trimming it up and getting rid of volunteer trees that are in there. But I mean, I think if we take them all down, you're gonna have some people on Grand Circle be really, really mad. I mean, it was kind of, they were put in there kind of for a block, so people didn't have to look at the cemetery. I mean, and that's what they were putting in there for, so...
I have no problem.
But like, you know, like I said, if you trim them up, I mean, you, we could, they could mow underneath them more, you know. I mean, I'm looking at like the second picture, like right next to your house, where all those, I mean, those could be mowed right up to those trees then, without any problem, and make it look real nice.
So you're trimming the ones that they've eaten, and leave the other ones?
That's, that's what I would do, 'cause, like I said, I mean, if we, if we would take down any of those, whether the arborvitae's or the spruce trees, I will guarantee you we're gonna find out in the hands of people in Grand Circle. I mean, we'll want to tell the public here in any way to have a voice on, let them know they're gonna do it anyway, if we, if we would take them down.
I, I agree.
But I, I mean, I don't have, I don't have a problem with like the ones that are getting eaten by the deer now, trimming them up, you know, so we can get them mowed. Or you could get them mowed underneath it, or whatever.
Well, it looks like there's volunteers in there, too, and you can take the volunteers out.
I dissed volunteers.
Obviously, it could be mowed a whole lot closer, and we got, put in the weeds and...
Because it's not an attractive look, though, you know, the, the deer eat up to five foot or so, and can't get any higher. All that section is just brown, straggly, it's not, it does not look that great. You know, if I was in your house, I'd have to put a fence or something there to make it look at least a little bit better. See, now, we can mow, but it's not gonna improve the look of the bottom four feet of these trees. But I, I agree, I can't, you don't see taking them out as a solution either. I don't know what, do we plant something smaller in front of it, like a bush to try to cover up the...
The bushes, I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna eat those trees.
Probably, yeah.
We don't have a real problem.
If there's something...
Depending on what you plant.
Yeah, we did the right thing.
There seems like barberry and such, that have thorns on it, and prefer to a more current expert to plant it. There are some shade-loving ones, since it's in the shade of the...
What do you, what do you think, Travis? I mean, you think you guys get in there with the truck and the chipper and just bust, you know, that bug around there as you're trimming them down?
I think we can clean them up, so they don't look straggly. I mean, you're gonna still have, I personally wanna make sure all my, my place is trimmed up, so I can mow around them. But as far as bushes and stuff, I think we'll have, we'll have the same problems with stuff growing up in those. The only thing I can assume, and that would be, would be like hostas around the base. Those are pretty hardy, come back.
Do deer eat hostas?
I thought they did.
Well, not during the winter, they're gonna be died off, so, so, I think...
They don't bother my hostas in the summer.
Yeah, you would...
Just shoot at them, so...
That, that would break the, break the area up a little bit, too.
Well, obviously, this can be, this can be mowed better, and get rid of the excess trees.
Now, this is the cemetery side, and there's not really much we can do on the property on our side, or is there?
Well, if you plant some there in front of those trees, it's gonna be on my property.
It'll be on your property, then.
Yeah, because they're planted so close to the property lines. That corner tree, probably the branches, two, three foot into my property.
If it's on your property, you have a right to trim all of the branches.
Well, I wasn't gonna do it until...
Yeah, no. But that, that would be my suggestion, is have the city guys, you know, start on one end and just clean them all up, and, you know, as you clean and chip them, take out the volunteer trees out of there, and we'll get done with that, see where it looks, how it'll go from there.
Get it started, please.
That's fine, they're just, like I said, this has been four or five years looking at it, and it was nice when they're, before they all got eaten. I liked them then, but now, I don't.
And it does appear they were planted a little too closely together for this intended size. I'm sure they were the right, it was the right thinking at the time.
Oh, right, yeah.
They're, you know, they're twenty-five feet now.
I think they were planted, supposed to be, I think, six or eight foot from the property line. So when they get mature, and some of these trees with our good Iowa soils tend to grow a little bigger than what the literature says.
Probably two foot, maybe three foot from the property line.
What do you want to do, guys?
Um, I, I, like we all just said, is, or most of us said, let's just get them cleaned up and see where we can go from there, as Mike said, it's a good start.
Let's get a clear area of marking, so we know where the property line is to...
My house, right?
Well, the stakes on that corner tree, the stakes are right there. One that goes to the east, and the one that'd be going south.
Yeah, but it can either be going this way or this way, you see what I mean?
Yeah.
You gotta have, but there surely, in that, in that addition, there surely should be the availability to, to know exactly where the law line is. But that would give, so that we all know that, then, if we don't know, I don't think.
Because between Morgan and I, there's a stake right there, too.
Okay, well, if we can run strings or whatever, and, and make sure that we, we know where they're, they are, I would be much in favor of cleaning the area up, getting the old trees, the bad tree, actually, trees and the drugs and things out of there, and then seeing how it looks. And you might be able to trim some of those, so that it's a little better...
Better, more attractive, yeah.
Start from there and see.
So I, I, too, would like to know that they're, how close they are to the actual property line, because, yeah, the, the plan for this kind of thing always would have been, since, what? I know we did something like that at the, at the park behind, I don't know whose property was it, on the corner as you drive in. But, yeah, we'll, I think we, I say we get cleaned up.
We'll do the north-south row, and then maybe take some pictures, and have you guys go look, and then see what you want to do for the rest of it.
Because there's a whole east-west, there's a lot more to the east, isn't there?
Yeah, I mean, I said it times, uh...
Yeah, I'd, I'd get this cleaned up behind this place.
I'd, I would say, do it all, get it all done. I mean, you're gonna have the chipper, you're gonna have the guys there. Once you turn that corner, just keep going, get it done. I mean, because before long, it's gonna, they're gonna be in on the area now. And then, what do you mow, how do you get a little bit closer to those trees?
Well, yeah, whatever, but that's, yeah, we need to make sure that it looks a little better than that. Let's try it. I don't, I guess I don't care whether we go on down or not, but at least on your back, it would be...
We'll get the first, we'll get the first ones done, see what it looks like, and if we have questions, we'll bring it back.
I think that's a good start.
See, I want to...
Motion by Nate?
Yeah.
Second?
Second.
Second by Mike, or Mike? All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion possible action in reference to bid for cutting down trees within cemetery.
Uh, this is a, he's an old problem. I know Doug has brought it up several times. These are the big tall pines in the, what I call the old part of the cemetery. About every windstorm, we lose branches. We kind of put the branches around the tree to bury the wave of future falls, so we're not breaking stumps. So that's why the branches are still out there, is because they brace the fall of the new branches. I think we lost a pretty good chunk during ratio, and I believe they're on their last leg, so Travis has a bid that came today. I told you that packet, he was supposed to be bringing it, as from Si.
Uh, it's a big number on there. Part of the reason for the big number is, is getting a crane to commit and vote to that price until weather's permitting is kind of difficult. So that's why that's the worst-case scenario. He wrote on there for his price. Every bit of that's gotta go down in stages, so we're actually gonna have to help and move some stones to get his truck in there. And then, once crane's set up, to take that tree down, we'll have to grind that stump, so we can get the truck back in, partner, reset the crane, work with it. It's just, it's a, it's a domino effect. It's not, it's not easy. Si did a lot of work for us in the past. He also did a lot during the ratio. He's helped save the city a ton of money. So I'm pretty comfortable that if we can beat this, they'll beat it.
I mean, I always say, yeah, to cut down trees, especially in the cemetery, but, I mean, these trees have been problems for years.
We've been trying, since I've been here, I know it started way back when Tony was still here, trying to get them down. Um, if you go out, or if you had a chance to look at them, especially today, it was a great day, there's one of the two trees sitting closer to the road that with the wind, you can see, it's completely stretched, and then it'll go back, if the wind blows on it. The average cost of a stone is about three thousand dollars, so one of those falls, this price is gonna look pretty small.
So the trees split, you're saying?
Yeah.
Can his lid go to high enough where the gap leaves that?
Uh, we can't, we can't. It, to actually rope them down, is gonna be more time-consuming and more labor, and there's not enough, he's not comfortable with not damaging a stone underneath doing it that way, that he actually wants to take it to chunks and roll it over to buy the curve on cemetery road, and then process there.
What are you gonna do?
There is, uh, just so you know, there's seventy thousand dollars remaining in tree removal. Now, keep in mind, that also includes ratio trees, and it includes ash trees.
Still ash wood or trees?
Yep. A lot of them were taken out, too, but there's still a few, so just, so you know, there is, there is money there.
What's the status of, of one bid on one, one job this day?
That's in the ash wood trees, ash trees, man.
Are you meaning we should have a competitive bid?
Shouldn't have a competitive bid, I mean...
I'm, I'm a big fan of size, but, um, but procedureally, we need, we need to have a competitive bid.
I would think we could weigh on a thirty thousand dollar expenditure.
I think so, too.
Or maybe I'm not supposed to say that, if we're gonna have a competitive bid, then...
There you go.
But, but, I would hate to, and I, I don't doubt that these is probably the only, one of the few that's been hanging, but, wow, that's a lot of money, too.
Wish you wanted to set the price.
Hm?
Instead, I wished you wanted to set the price.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, he, he, he said he, you know, his is the worst scenario, that's what that is.
Can we look into a competitive bid, and, and yes, if he gets an opportunity to start with his pencil?
Okay, the motion for, for all the second bid?
I motion to get a second bid on the tree removal of cemetery.
Motion, have a second?
Second.
Nate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
John?
Nate?
Sarah?
Here.
I get a second bid, I want, I want it as soon as possible. I want this done. We always seem to be very greedy on this.
It's getting hard to get people to call us back.
If it, if it don't, if we don't have one by the next meeting in two weeks, they should be able to come on and look at it. I mean, if they're reputable, they should be able to come and look at it. I mean, even, I mean, tell them, you got two weeks. We're gonna, we're gonna set a bid on two weeks, just tell them that. Discussion possible action in reference to main street tree planters. In your packet, there's different ones that we, Travis has pictured, Christina, or Marsha, or Brandon, and it was... I have Travis writing on tables, so just trying to kind of give you an idea how tall some of these are, wide these are. Which ones were you kind of going for?
I, several of them, Brandon, these are just kind of, kind of up to you guys. Height-wise, I think a little bit taller is better, because as you see, I put planters up there, just to give you a visual.
Where are those?
Two feet, maybe. Those are about twenty inches. So, I think if you guys are gonna do it, you'd want it at least thirty inches high.
The thing is, there's three back-to-back there, so I'm not sure we need three of them right there, but it should be as tall as this table. We talked about filling in two, maybe put one there, put one on the other side, filling in two, and resetting the outlet down into the, into the ground. That's an option, too, because I think if you put three right there, it's kind of, looks like too much.
I don't think, I, I don't think we need a planter to replace or take a tree out. I think two on west, we need a north side, two on the south side, moving plenty, you know, I would, if it was me, I would put a planter in front of Lloyd's, I mean, because that sidewalk's still as it is.
In front of the salon, on, and by Earl's bumpout, if we were to put one right there, too, that kind of impedes the walking through the ADA, which the tree did, too, so I don't know how that ever got put in when they did that, so that's something we might want to look at right there, too.
I mean, I don't, and, you know, even in front of the community center, I mean, I stood in the sidewalk the other day, and I don't know if that would even put a planter there. I mean, that's pretty shallow, one, two.
So I think Brandon and I were talking, it would just be Main Street if we do them. The library side with the steps coming down, you got your bike ramp there, all that stuff pushes it out, and that's, I mean, you put a planter there, that's gonna impede the, the southeast line.
That'd be on Main Street.
Uh, like two, like two, both sides up there, we have four, two down here, six, right, six total. I, I don't know if I'd even put one on Lloyd's side.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
I mean, in front, I know in front of, in front of the building, in front of the Chrome Building, I mean, that sidewalk gave way.
It's too small, you'd have to go to the opera house, you know, I mean, that'd be the only...
Maybe you could put one down. Four, we got one, two, three, four, five, six, possibly seven. Seven, and you're looking at thirty, you're looking at either two seventy or three forty apiece, one's thirty inches, one's thirty-six inches. And if, if I hit some, some of these are there in circle. I would assume that's actually weight.
I, the, they're showing colored ones. We have already four big ones, or four big ones that are cement, right? Or are those, uh, probably a different color?
No, you...
The ones that we have now, the big ones?
Yeah.
I would think you'd wanna match, I would think you'd wanna match these with the big ones, color-wise. Do they have a gray?
Yeah, these are, these are aggregate based, too. The, the ones that currently have aggregate?
Yeah, that's, that was, these right here were the, the cheapest ones, I mean...
That matched visually?
Which would, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a...
And you can get them, you can get them in gray, too, don't put a dye in the concrete, so...
Do they call that graphite, then?
No, graphite is black. Graphite is black.
So...
They got five, they're showing five colors, and they got them.
But they show them gray.
So there's a six color...
These are, these are all colored, those are colored down there. The front, the front page, the front page would be like an option, so...
Okay, yeah, all right.
The, the ones that we got down, down here, they're not colored, so those are just regular concrete.
I would suggest getting the ones, that one right there, the gray.
So, do you think that we're gonna act?
Yes.
That's as close as you're gonna get.
I wanna say there is, maybe in, uh...
Those are plenty big. I made a thought thinking, but...
So do you wanna go thirty inches or thirty-six?
In diameter.
No, I...
And thirty-inch height? Those are, yeah, we only, if you have to go thirty-eight, thirty-inch height, we'll...
No, thirty-eight height.
That was Travis's suggestion, was getting it.
So, would you rather go twenty-five inches in diameter?
Or four feet in diameter?
Twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty-five.
You wanna go twenty-five, you want the top one...
Go four feet.
Yeah, two sixty.
Two sixty.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Exactly. We need to go with the twenty-five.
Twenty-five by thirty-five.
Twenty-five by thirty-five.
We got six, possibly...
It'd be this table, it'd be as tall as this table, and as wide as this table.
We have six, possibly seven, seven's one would be like down in front of the opera house somewhere. So I get a motion to, what do you guys want to do?
Is this part of our tree, I mean, do we have a tree budget, or just landscaping budget for downtown that this is?
It'd be like community beautification, uh, of trees, which comes, trees comes out of that.
The trees that are down there come out of that, yeah.
Come out of tiff, then, since that tiff is downtown.
No, we didn't allocate that for that, but it's come out of general fund, it's community beautification. How much, how much you spend on Christmas lights, Asher?
A lot. I mean, we're averaging probably a thousand dollars a year for lights, and so...
This, this will be a couple grand, and, uh, that's quite a lot.
So you're looking at the S B two-five?
Yeah.
Two-two-five?
Yeah, twenty-five in diameter versus...
Twenty-five in diameter, thirty inches high.
High as this table.
And deep in gray.
Yeah, six, maybe possibly seven.
You know, it's by now.
Yeah, I'm a six.
I say we start with six, and see what, how it looks, if we need to add more, then we add more.
Is that a motion?
Uh, that's a motion.
Got a motion to buy six, uh, twenty-five by thirty, at two hundred and sixty apiece, you know, second?
Second.
Got a motion, second, Nate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Second reading of ordinance oh-three twenty-two, update on chapter ninety-nine sewer rates.
Uh, we passed it last time, this is just the increase, three percent for sewer rate, starting July one. Got a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
For respondents, we're gonna grant their new, uh, board letter, I'll read it, I'll read it to you. Dear Brandon, seconds, congratulations. We are pleased to announce the board supervisors has approved grant funding for well five improvements in amount of one million dollars from the Lynn County portion of the American Rescue Plan, Plan Acts funds. You should be receiving a packet of... You should be receiving a packet of information and forms for the additional grant process via, via a email. Please complete and return this information at your earliest convenience. This packet is an integral part of setting up the subward agreement between the city of Lisbon and Lynn County. Thank you for your participation in the grant process and for all you do for Lynn County. Zenzere Lynn County Forest Supervisors, Ben, Louie and Rustace.
Thank you for the million.
All right, I will give, Dave had a key role in this as well. We both spoke to Darren Gage, um, and then we, uh, put in for two projects, one was for the waterline, one was for the well. Um, there is an outside chance that, um, they could open this back up again next year, because remember the rescue funds are coming in two pieces, no guarantees. But anyway, it was a really good day for Lisbon and, uh, that doesn't happen very often. And it kind of, uh, it's more than what we'd have gotten from the CBDG grant for the waterline project, so I guess it was a blessing in disguise, but, um, Dave, you have anything?
No, I'll jump in here when I do my report, kind of cover the services.
And just so you know, the information packet has been done and turned back in, so what they refer to now there.
I just wanna, I wanna say thanks a lot, I mean, that, getting a million dollars, that's huge. Very, very, I mean, nothing, when we're doing good projects, you know, you know, we're saving millions of dollars on stuff. To actually get a grant for a million dollars, that is huge. Well, I appreciate it and so thank you guys for taking the time to do it and get it in.
Yes, nice work, thank you.
City engineer report, go ahead, Dave.
Just a couple of things, so with that million dollars that we were awarded from Lynn County, that will pay for the bulk of the well project. And that allows us to ship some of the money we allocated from the bond over to the water main. We're trying to fit eight through nine dollar water main project, and we're working through some revisions to the, the project in order to do that, based on a discussion we had with Brandon and Travis last week. So, we're, we're very close, we've got it down about three point two, and we'll put some alternates in there so that we can fit the project to our budget. Uh, continue to work on that. And then, um, on business thirty overlay project, um, the last, uh, bid letting from DOT was last Tuesday. There was only one project in the area and, uh, didn't really see much change. We do have a large project coming in Iowa County, um, on the May seventeenth letting, that's about thirty-eight thousand tons of asphalt on I eighty. So, if we, uh, see any difference there, we'll report back. We also have two projects nearby, one in Trayer and one in Tipton, that, um, will be bidding with asphalt as an option. We'll take a look at prices and in May, we should be able to come back to council with a recommendation on how to proceed with that.
All right, everybody have anything for Dave? Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you, work director, report.
Uh, Palladium Town, they're gonna start doing the crack, their chip sealing on the streets. We'll put a post out on Facebook, just want people to be aware of that. We did get the sledge holt last week from the sewer plant. That went, uh, was pretty uneventful, which is always a good, good thing in that situation. Other than that, I think that's it for right now.
You got anything to do for Travis?
Before we get too far past that, just from my little knowledge, the overlay projects that we were just chatting about, is that Lisbon's expense?
We received the money from the state when they...
Okay, all right, I was going to say, because the old, old, old guy that used to be there twenty years ago, that all got negotiated at one point when I was on before. And it was all the state's expense, I just wanted to clarify that.
Bill, say anything for Carson?
Not a whole lot, um, we're wrapping up spring soccer, so we got about a week and a half for the littles and about two and a half weeks for the older kids. Um, all of our games that are being played here towards or the beginning of May will be in either Mount Vernon or Solon due to the baseball team taking over. And then we have registrations for our summer sports going on right now, that'll be finalized on May sixth. And we will be playing everything for intro, T-ball, coach pitch over at Seeds of Faith. So, I wanna thank them for, they've been really good to us. Anytime we need to use that space over there, it's always an absolutely, so a big thanks to them for that, um, and I think that's all I have.
Let me guess, you, did you have soccer?
Hundred and sixty-five, hundred and sixty-five, way more than that.
That was record, right?
Yeah, I think we had, I think we were closer to like one-e.
Wow.
Somewhere near. Somewhere near. Around one-e.
With that being said, supposed to hit down to twenty-seven again tomorrow night? Bathrooms and stuff will stay closed until we stop going below freezing.
When's the pool open?
We'll stop going below freezing. I was just skipping you. That was something I forgot to...
Say it if you were listening.
To touch base.
I, uh, the reason I ask is, I'm going to, here the next couple, three days, I'm just going to walk around, borrow some metal and talk to them about sports complex. Because I mean, I don't know if a lot of them, I just wanna, I don't want to be kidding, we had our soccer program, what we're gonna do, so... Police Department report, I'm a guy from J Bar, Greg.
He called you about three or four different times.
Sounds like my grandmother, yeah.
She's still just violating self-work.
We're on January twenty eighth.
Can you answer your phone? Police Department.
Just a shout out to Lisbon Schools, we just, uh, wrapped up the seventh grade dare program over there and finished that up last week, so that was good. Appreciate the partnership and being able to go in there and spend some time teaching the kids and working with the kids. Um, also, the drug drop, uh, take back event is April thirtieth, ten AM to two PM, we'll be doing it at the lobby of the police department. So, anybody wanting to get rid of, unwanted prescription medications can drop those off the police department, uh, at that time, otherwise we still have the two drop boxes as well.
Anybody anything for them? On an asthma attack?
Oh, main street, uh, seems to be an upstairs renter on one of, certainly not the dogs, but where he's coming from, it's a gray Camaro.
Maybe, 'cause I, I know, I know if somebody was in there with me.
Gray, it's a gray Camaro that decides to back in to the main street, is that your last couple of days?
I don't think there's anything we'd be able to do about that, it doesn't, there's nothing I know of that specifies which way you can park in there. Backs into the public parking spots?
Uh-huh. Does he between the lines go?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He just backed in.
Or backwards.
Yeah.
Which, which side, which apartment?
Down in front of the laundry room.
Oh.
All the works for New York, they're really good back there.
We got anything for Doug? Hamlet's report.
Um, can you guys get the report in your cabinet?
Yes.
Right, well, I don't really have much to add unless you guys have questions.
What, what is an intercept?
That came up in Mount Vernon too. Um, so, an intercept would be, um, typically it's Mechanicsville, Stanwood, um, Tipton, somebody like that. They don't have a paramedic on their truck, it's a call that warrants a paramedic, so they'll call and utilize one of ours.
You, you going down there or do you just pick him up locally?
Uh, it depends, um, so a lot of times, it truly depends on what they call. Um, you know, if it's Mechanicsville, they're calling as they're leaving scene, by the time it goes from Cedar to Lynn, we get the page and moving. Uh, we typically either meet at the overpass or the garage, uh, but we have been on scene before in Loudon with Clarence ambulance or, or about halfway to Tipton. That's what we use the interceptor for primarily, um, the squad car we have, if you've seen that out and about. So, it's a, a great, um, tool to use and it gives us a great opportunity to work with some awesome crews, well, outside of our own.
Anybody any questions? Alright, thank you. Fire chief?
About the fire related tonight.
City administrator?
Um, lights at the park, if you've been by there, uh, John's electric's been trying to trench in between the rain. This is probably the wrong spring to pick to do this project, because the weather's not been cooperating. Um, with that though, uh, he's hoping to finish tomorrow and the next day with the wiring. The plan is for Thursday, Musco's gonna bring a crew up here and we're gonna install the lights on the ground, and hopefully Friday, they go on. However, we need to check because it looks like it's gonna be windy, shocker. So, we have to see what the threshold is for the crane and the lights and all that. So, bear with us, it might be into next week, but our hope is by the weekend, the lights will be up. John is planning to take them down, the old lights down, uh, while he's here, so just bear with us as we do that. Sports complex bids are out, we've, I've received two separate emails on companies wanting to bid, uh, they're due May fifth. And then we will talk about that on May ninth, so our next council meeting. So, just so you know, those are out. The fence back here has been repaired, however, one panel's now damaged again, um, so I gotta call back, but for the most part, this is complete. The fence, or dump is complete, and the fence around Grant Circle, uh, list station has been completed as well.
Brandon, this fence, I was meant to tell you, this fence was all open on Sunday morning. Gates, gates were open.
Yeah, they're, they need to add another latch or something and...
So, I don't know if that did some damage or, or not, but...
I think that was part of it, so they need to come in and add another latch to make sure it's, we got it secured now, um, but they need to come back.
Okay, will that have like a padlock on it or something?
Uh, I don't know if it did.
Never did in the past, no.
No. It's just, uh, the vinyl twist.
You had a better latch.
Yeah, the vinyl twist so much that the, the normal standard one latch that goes over the spring loader, that doesn't, it'll move and pull itself out. Where you need the one on the bottom, so that bottom of the gate can't do this, so...
The last thing, just, just so everyone knows, we still have trees, obviously we discussed that from the Dray Show, there's still some stumps out there to get done. And then, uh, one of the last things we'll do are the street signs, uh, we did all the emergent ones that are, uh, involve traffic safety. But just know that the, uh, street signs will be the last thing we do, um, for Dray Show related. So, we're getting there, but just wanted to make note of that, I think that's it.
Questions for Brandon?
No.
Christine, you got anything?
Uh, I attended I M F O A last week and thank you council for allowing me to be able to do that twice each year. And I am now officially a certified financial officer, so...
So, Marsha's here, you got anything?
Well, I've been spending a lot of time trying to get the file ready to go for our cemetery project, I can't wait for it to get up in the wind. We did have a preview of it last week, week before, and Mike sat in on it, and we had, um...
Steve Mc...
Steve, um, McNeil from the church to down the two, and they thought it was a very, uh, impressive program. So, they're looking at possibly, they thought maybe it's for sure helping us with the startup of it, but they weren't sure about if they'd be able to continue with it. But the startup is the big part of it anyway, so I can't wait for it to get here, so let's get going on it.
That sounds good, all right, I'll run a little report back to you, I mean, we've talked about that for years. Council report, Nate?
I don't have anything today, other than thank you Brandon for the grant, uh, award.
Mike?
Yes.
I don't have anything either.
Greg?
Just to thank Brandon for, for everybody who was involved in the grant, good job.
Yeah?
Uh, congrats to Christina for her accomplishment, thanks to everybody that worked on the grants, whether we got it or not, it's so important. Southeast Lins, uh, trying to give two thousand dollars in donations to, uh, get pool passes for those that were on the waiting list till they ran out of pool passes. That's all I have.
Sarah?
Um, I, congratulations Christina, first of all, um, thank you Brandon and everybody else who was involved in that grant, that's, uh, awesome. Just, it's actually amazing, so, um, that's really all I have.
Mine is, you can see that they started out the history center, was our next step, but it don't look like it's gonna help too good.
That's, I'm gonna get an update with them tomorrow, looks like they're still peeling back what was there and, um, see what their next plan is.
I know, I know they said that soft, Greg, is there any way we can like just test some corner of, where you're looking at something, you know, like a...
I'm not sure on that, I know that, um, in the next part, um, that's all part of that next phase. And I know that DSM, once this was completed, they're gonna come back and reassess the brick, and we'll have a report and then refine their quote for that next part based on what was, basically their bidding and sight unseen, essentially.
I hope we're not, not be paying for all the problems they're having getting the paint off, extra, with an hourly.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do, uh, I'll go down and talk to them and get a, an idea, and if there's some drastic change in the works, I'll be sure to let you know.
I'm amazed that all of Lisbon got it all.
And I don't know if the people have noticed, you know, we got, on each half, we're in here over the weekend, pretty much, and they filled the pond up, pretty good. Get, search some people over there fishing yesterday. Looks, I mean, it looks real nice, now that it's full and all those rocks, I mean, that pond was really nice. We got anything else?
I think Lynx has had the, the one, the main barn, uh, tuck point gun on the, on the foundation. It would be a garden air, they got some beams that have come back in here.
It's got two beams built in and then we found some barn boards north of town that are open to repurpose, so, um, we thought about two weeks, no, I have that one done. And the last I knew, there have been no surprises, so, and we're right on track with the money, so, good, so great with that.
We got anything else? Possible closed session pursuant of code Iowa section twenty-one, uh, point five, one, uh, to evaluate the professional competency. Remembered individuals whose employment, hiring, performance, or discharge have been considered or necessary to prevent the release of irritable injury to that individual's reputation. And that individuals request, uh, request a closed session. Uh, this is for Marsha, Marsha, would you like to go into closed session?